We will call the regular planning commission meeting of July 15th to order at seven o'clock even. I'll raise your pledge.
Let's lead the nation to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, we have a roll call, please.
Edison.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Kaddajusik.
Here.
I am here.
All righty. Okay, the first thing we have is the agenda for which I am going to make an amendment. We will add a 5A. We're going to set address numbers for condos going in above the Armada Bar and Grill. Okay? Other than that, anybody got anything on the agenda before we do a motion?
All right, you ready for a motion?
Yes.
All right. I motion to approve the Village of Armada Planning Commission Agenda for July 15th, 2024.
As amended.
As amended.
And as amended.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next one is the meeting minutes of the June 17th meeting. Does everybody get a chance to look those over?
Yep.
Okay, anything otherwise?
Motion to approve the Village of Armada Planning Commission, June 17th, 2024 minutes.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now, we have someone here that would like to add some address numbers, which is what the planning commission does. We get the numbers, however, she has numbers of her own, so if you'd like to give us a couple of words.
Yes, my name's Kathy Denowitz. I bought the loft above the Armada Bar and Grill and the Creamery, 3,200 square feet. There's like a natural divider up the middle stairs, there's a left and a right. My contractor recommended that I put in two meters right away for both sides. I'm working on cleaning and hopefully developing the east side. I can't get electricity until I have addresses. It was suggested that the bar and grill is 23084. At one point it was going to be point upstairs would have been A and B. We thought that would be confusing. The Creamery is 23090. And going from the center of town, heading east, lower numbers go up. So upstairs, there will be two meters. And I would like above the ABG to be 86, because they are 84. Above ABG would be 86. And then 88 would be above the Creamery, because they are 90. So basically, and nobody had other address on East Main there as that address. So if you approve it, then I can, we put stickers on the meter and DTE will come and set the meters and we get to pay more bills.
Wonderful.
So that's the plan. And if you approve it and Becky says those, I checked my limited resources to make sure that nobody else has those addresses. But it's much better than AB.
I think so.
Yeah.
Especially with the bar grill being ABG or grill.
Yeah, and all my mail will come to the PO box like it always does. But the DTE needs a physical address. Thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate it. Want to get electricity?
I would bet.
I'll have company.
Does anybody have any questions for her?
So we're allowed to do that? I mean, post office doesn't ever say any addresses and stuff?
Actually, the addresses for, in the village used to come from Edison. The village never set the addresses until, I don't know, maybe 10 years ago. But Edison's set all the addresses. So as long as she's cleared it and Becky doesn't say that there's any of those there.
So we have her proposed numbers for two condos. There is no one in town that has those numbers. We are going to give a contingent approval. Becky was not in this morning. She is going to have to check the records and make sure that when those were actually made condos, that they weren't assigned an address at that time. We don't know of any, because she just wants to double check.
Yes, and I have some of those documents, but she has to do it de facto. There is only one condo upstairs, but I'm just putting in two meters, because one side, it's going to take years. It's been dormant for a long time, so hopefully we'll see some progress.
Right, okay. So tonight's motion is, motion to approve addresses as given by the owner, contingent upon the fact that there are no addresses assigned to those upper lots.
Lots, yeah.
Okay?
So you need a second on that?
Please.
Okay, I'll support that.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It is approved, and Becky will let you know. I'm sure she's going to be in tomorrow.
Okay.
All right. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, number six is where we are now for public comment. Anybody before we get started? No public comment. Okay, we are on the Franklin Street Land Management Group discussion. We have Mr. Fritz here with us.
Here I am again.
You were given a copy of the needs?
Yes, I was. I think, one of the things I think in my mind's eye is the ordinance itself. Okay, I've had, anyway, I don't know if the ordinance really, the first question I would have is there another project like this anywhere in town?
No.
Okay. Is what type of zoning would it take for this type of project to materialize? In fact, let's back up a little bit. I got one more question before that, okay? And that would be, they talk about 10%, right? So if it's a 10%, you can do it so, basically, if it's an 8,400 square foot lot, and you reduce it by 10%, that would be a 7,560 square foot lot, okay? Now, is that, is that what's meant when it says 10%?
You're talking about the bonus?
Yeah, the zoning. He says you got to figure it out. Before I can figure it out, I need to know what I got to figure, okay? And by way of example, that first plan I gave you, you know, one had 31 lots?
Right.
If you took the 31 lots and took the square, now, those lots varied from, I think, up to 11,000 feet down to 6,800 feet or something. It was tiered or under 7. But if you took the composite of all 31 lots, okay, it came out, it comes out to 8,024 square feet. Now, all the lots are, aren't the same size. Some are pie-shaped somewhere. So basically, the question is, if there's a conglomerate, in other words, every lot is not 7,500 square feet, can we use a, an average of all the lots, let's say the 31 lots, and those be, which they have is more than 7,500 square feet? Is that permissible under the code?
The way I'm seeing Brian's notations here is that the way the ordinance is written now, it accepts 20 lots.
Well, no, he said example, he used the word example. Now, that was just an example, because I got to find out how, what the zoning, what it says. He does use an example. No, it says there's a 10% shrinkage, okay? So if you take each lot and shrink it 10%, then that brings you 7,560, which means the first plan I brought in would go.
It doesn't say shrinkage. It says 10% bonus if it is warranted.
To allow additional lots.
That's what I thought.
So that means you got to shrink the other ones to fit two more.
But he would have a 10%.
Public benefit provision, quality of life improvement, et cetera.
I think we all have a different idea of what that paragraph is actually explaining.
Well, every, the only way you can, to fit two more slides would be to allow additional smaller lives to the rest of houses. Otherwise, you would go and fit four slides.
See, that's the key. I mean, if you say every lot has to be 7,560 feet, or, you know, to use that number, then it's going to be pretty tough to get much of any kind of project in there. I mean, that would be large enough for a number of, you know, enough units to go ahead and put the sewer and water and all that kind of stuff in there. But if it is that average lot, I mean, in other words, there's some give and take here, since it's not installed or in other words. I really was struggling with this 10% all along, and I should have probably asked a simple question right off the bat.
How do they call it, an overlay?
Yeah, because it's under 20.04B.
I'm writing down it.
Was that 20, 20.04B?
Because what he's really asking is what, I don't know what he's really asking. Well, he says you can get two more. Well, probably, is that the same thing?
All right, well, let's go over what we do have, just a few questions that we need, so that we know that once we get.
Yeah, the reason I did that, I was able to do that, and so if that worked, obviously, if I got three less lots, they would work, okay? So what, because last time we talked about open space, maybe, in other words, I'm one of the two radical different plans here, okay? And the only reason, so I thought, well, I know what the first one is, if you take all the lots and add them up. That I didn't bother, I haven't entered there yet. In fact, I would have brought his report with me, but I don't know how all this computer stuff works, so either. So anyway, but that's why, I did talk to him, and he said, I didn't think blah, 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 blah. And this is what comes out, 8,024 feet if you take the square foot of every single one of those lots.
The way it says here.
That's the first one.
The first.
Oh, that there.
First one. Now, that one I didn't do on, but if the first one worked at 31 lots, obviously, one at 28 lots would work. I didn't do that, I mean, because it'd be kind of obvious, so, I guess that's working.
All right, so apparently we have a few things to go over with Brian, but if you'd like to, would you go over anything else?
Do you? Well, some of the things, because basically I've got to do something, okay? If you, I hear that you'd like to have that project, if that's true, can we massage it with what's there? Or there is what you call contract zoning. Were you given those, a copy of what that is, contract zoning? I don't know if I got it.
I'm sure Brian would have that before.
Yeah, I'll give, it's an order, I'm not sure it's about 300 feet as long, but this is the basic thing that a contract zoning is. And it's something that can be done if this ends up being a, what's, I have to share. I thought I gave that before, because I gave some letters and stuff.
Where does that come from?
I've had that for quite a few years. That comes from the state. I don't know who handed that to me. I think I had a attorney look at it some years ago with another municipality who were looking at how to handle it. But they were able to. Most municipalities, the reason don't see that very often is the PUDs cover that. You don't have a PUD, you don't have, you don't have something that gives you some leverage. It has to be this way, and if it ain't that way, that's it. Now, what you can't sit here and barter, I mean, if these are what it is, and most PUDs, we just, I just went to one over in St. Clair, where it was zone residential. In fact, it's seven acres, what acreages on us with a few feet of what this project is. And it was zone residential, and they end up with 42, well, 21, 21 units duplexes. Now, that one, duplexes worked out okay from a monetary point here that the developer, well, I own the property, and I'm kind of working with this guy, but anyway, because he lives over there, I said, you do whatever you got to do. So anyway, that's been going on for quite a while, but I think it started last year. But anyway, they were able to work with the PUD, and it need contract zoning or anything else like that. So, but you're, you got what they call PU, I don't know what, it's PU. Anyway, I have a little bit of a.
It is a PU, though.
PUD. And so consequently, we can't, we might be able to work under what you have, okay? And I know he's going to want that, I'm going to get Brian that take off of, you know, what those lot sizes are. I'm just saying for right now, because you are the ultimate. All he does, he's got to interpret what's there, what he thinks anyway, and pass it on. So he doesn't have it in his, you folks do. When I say, because he's not part of the community, he's just an advisor. So that's what we be here tonight. But anyway, I guess if, I guess if you really want the project, or either one of them really, I mean, they would both come under the same type of variance type thing, and I don't care which one you would choose, but that'd be fine, we move forward. If it's, if the 10% is figured out some other way. Now, how would you figure, if someone told you, you got a lot that's 70 by 120, and you're going to reduce it by 10%? How do you do that? Do you make it 63 feet by 74 feet, 124 feet? Do you make it 72 feet by, you don't know. How are we going to, how are we going to reduce the size lot? And that's what confuses me. I don't know how, how you would do that. So if you have 31 lots or 28 lots, and you average them out, now, maybe those lots don't average out to 28. I know the other ones do, 20. I didn't do the math on the 28, but I mean, I'm sure it'd be the same type of thing.
I mean, yeah, there's got to be some kind of structure. Unless you get that one house and one big lot, and then have a bunch of them on top of each other, so, I mean, with the East Main. There's got to be something that defines it.
Yeah, the other, the other project, because of the curves and dangles and dangles, now, that's a square thing, okay? Well, I guess what could happen, you got every lot in there, I think, is 49 by 125. Well, you could say, okay, fine, I could take some of those 125 and make them 155. And then it would work, because you have some at 49 feet, or 49 at 125, and you have some at 49 at 150. I can't, the prop is kind of tough, because it's an infill project, okay? So that means it's what's left over of everything that we did. And the layout is, the one over, the one over in St. Clair was skinny and long. You know, you just put a whole bunch of lots on the east side, and you're all done. I don't have that option. And when I did one time submit a 42-unit project, but after I took and looked at what it would, just a rough idea of what it would cost, it wasn't really worth me to do it, because I would have to, I'd have to charge almost the same amount of money per unit because of the development cost, because I had single loaded streets, if you know what I mean. In other words, usually you put a street down and put on something on both sides. In that project, I had only something on one side, I couldn't put anything on the other side. And so consequently, that wasn't really something that turned me on, and I was just fooling around with it. And I didn't bring it in front of the commission. Becky went ahead and gave it to the planner, she said, and the planner wasn't crazy about it, and I wasn't either, so that, I dropped that. Now, I might go come up with another plan to do that, but I guess, I'm trying to see if we can work under this. If we can't, then I got to do something else. Or contract zoning.
Yeah, I'll make sure to include that when I talk to Brian.
Your PUD is, I've never run across on any community, I, being 83 years old, I've seen a lot of these, okay? And I just happened to run across one that said PU, you know, using PUD to plan your development, because all subdivision's now are condo subs. Some of the people have been around when I had Phase 3 over there.
That's right.
I had to go to court and everything else and get, it was a nightmare. As luck would have it, it took me less than a year to clear it up. But I had nine of those sold, and people probably moved in, they were done. And I was able to move, I think, four of the nine, because it was three different parcels there, and some of them were on two, in other words. But I couldn't get all nine in. But anyway, that was, that was a nightmare. And that all came down while I was doing, I already had that in, it was already looked at, approved with a couple of conditions, resubmitted. And the next day, or a couple of days after I resubmitted, that's when that court figured it out.
The state came.
Screwed me right up, I mean, big time. That cost me thousands of dollars. Yeah, that was a pistol. But anyway, so that's kind of where we're at. So I guess, I guess it'd be, if you don't want the project, the first one or the second one, obviously, you can just say, hey, look, if that's the best you got, we're not, we're not interested, okay? Then obviously, it would be a case of you just turn it down.
Yeah, I don't think we've reached that point.
But the contract zoning, if you really did want it, would be, like I say, I've never used it. I've always been able to work with a PUD. But your PUD is restricted to the point where you folks don't really have a lot of, a lot of, a lot of give, okay? You can't sit here and say, hey, I love this project. Now, the only out you would have then would be if you take those lot, averaging, because then say you can't do it, okay? So if you said, we want this project, it's all right, we can, as long as they're 75, you know, they average out at 7,500 feet or more, which in this case is about 8,000 feet, so it's substantially over, but yet under 8,400. So basically, it's about, it's in the middle of the two, from the 10% to what's required. But if, if every lot has to be 45, 7,500 square feet, then obviously, there's no plan that I would be able to come with. This way, the lay of the land is, the shape of it. So that, and like I say, the reason I ask if there's another one in town, I, I was looking around to see if there's any, you know, some zone multiple or something like that. It would take multiple to do it. And I found in one of my files, I tell you what, this is cool, I found in one of my files, a nice color, nice color layout of that thing on the wall. The question would be, is it, I don't know how new that is. This one here.
The one in your hand is newer, Jeff.
Pardon?
That one's newer.
What?
That one is, that map is newer than that one.
It's newer. He forgot his hearing aids today.
Yeah, anyway, it was nice, I could read this map, okay? And I looked through here, and anything that's zone multiple already has a multiple unit on it, okay? There's no, this piece over here is multiple, or this piece of mine is multiple, or some, there's really no multiple that I could find. If this is, and you say this is probably the newer one anyway. So if that's the newer one anyway, chances are this is what I got to work with. Well, everything's our one. Well, I mean, there's a, not our one, but, yeah, our one, here's an industrial.
The only multiple that we have is downtown.
Pardon?
The only multiple that we have is right downtown.
And that's already.
And that's already been built up.
I think the construction company's on multi, like right next to the industrial space, that has a residential multi.
No, no, that's, pardon, that's already there already.
Oh, there are?
Yeah. And then these, some of these downtown are above, where she was talking, I would think above. She's talking over top of, because that cozes.
No, Armada Hotel.
Yeah, the hotel.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, on the other side of the street, there's some above there.
Yeah, new.
Yeah, those are relatively new.
Yeah, those are.
So basically, that's extended the multiple in town, is what's there, and what she has there, and what's already there. And I looked those up. They were back in 1972, I think, is when that 40 unit, when Windmill Point was done. And then the other one was, there was a duplex there somewhere, that not tied into that, that was done in, was that 69? I mean, it's been a while, okay? So 50 years back since the last multiple was built in this town that wasn't above a storefront or something like that, which is a smart way to go. I mean, that's what they do all the time anyway.
What is the name of that other complex? Well, I don't know if you call it complex, it's only what, two days?
Windmill Point is the big one, and the other one is?
So that's what I'm saying, but, and of course, even if you did, I mean, that's something I already own. And if there isn't anything in town, this would be the logical one to do, because it's not intrusive at all. I mean, it only, I think it backs up to six neighbors, and those are backyards, it gets backyards, I mean, it doesn't get any easier than that. I mean, that's, if there was a whole spot in this whole town that you wouldn't get a backlash from, well, that one there, the house I plan on putting, I'm going to absolutely sell it for more than the houses that are in Phase 1, 2, and 3. No, because those are older, and of course, these are new, and they cost you an arm and a leg to want to build new.
Nowadays, they sure do, you know?
So basically, because like, when I submitted this here, not that long ago, in my letter, and maybe I never got that, it was good to Becky, but I don't know if everything always gets, gets true, but it was a, they talk about this, there's no, nothing in town, blah, blah, blah. Okay. I thought I had four.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, anyway, but that, I think we need something to chew on here, and I don't want to, like I say, Brian could have maybe translated that, that thing. But if everyone, four of you sit here and say, we'd like to have it, maybe we can massage that to make it happen, or maybe we can do contract zoning. If you say, no, I don't want to come around with contract zoning, and we have to follow what's there, and we're not going to change it, then obviously I have to, because I probably can't comply with it.
Right, well, the four of us are going to have to wait for Brian's recommendation. I'm going to give him a copy of the contract zoning and speak with him and see what that is and how it would work, if it would work. But again, we would have to have, the items that he'd mentioned in the letter, we'd have to have those. But I will tell him that we're not exactly sure on the 10% bonus and the lot size before you move forward with that, so we'll try and get you kind of information.
Well, I can give the one for you, the first one. That's the one that's really a signature type of thing. I mean, if you were going to do a small project, 31 condo units, pretty small, you don't, you can't really get any better than that. In fact, I did, did you folks, I handed this in November 29th, just a letter of proposal, what I was going to do. I don't know if you got that, I did give it to Becky, but hopefully I got four of them.
I think this is what came with.
Well, I got a copy of it, it was cold.
Yeah, this is.
Right. I'm pretty sure you got this from your.
Did you folks, you see that in your packet?
I believe this was earlier, this is with Bruce?
That was, that was when I first came in on the very first one.
Right.
That was part of the packet I submitted. And also, you'll see. And also you'll see, well, keep looking through here and see if this. Anyway, and I'll also enclose, for people that usually don't understand condos, I gave them, what's that, what's that terminology of that? It's condo, condo docs. When, when you have, buy a condo, I don't know, anybody here live in a condo or know anything about it?
Real quick.
Pardon?
For a short period.
Well, anyway, you get a, you get a book, and a book tells everything you're supposed to have from me, the developer. And it's, it's ten or twelve pages long. And it's just an overview, okay? I gave her, I gave her ten, she wants nine, I think I gave her nine of those. Maybe you folks didn't get it, I don't know, but I gave it to her.
I don't think we got that yet.
Uh, I don't know.
Which one was that?
No, let's see. Well, I don't have, I don't, I don't.
I'm sorry, say again.
I don't know if I have brought it on.
Yeah, I didn't find out.
I didn't bring the condo doc with me. But if you didn't receive it, that, that, no, I guess I could have some concerns too.
But other than that, I'm.
Are you folks getting what I'm handing in? And I know I, and of course, I'm not believing anybody right now because I didn't bring the condo doc. But that was part of the package, there was nine of those.
So we were.
And I had nine of those. And what it was, is an overview of what we're talking about, I mean, how condos work and so on. That when, when you give all of the paperwork, it's probably thicker than your ordinance. I mean, that's how many pages are out to cover all this stuff. Oh, yeah, there you go, I'll take that, say it right there. Yeah, disclosure statement. So that's just an overview.
Right.
Okay, and there should be some more of those around.
We all would have gotten one.
If not, I, I can make sure you get some.
Well, I can make copies of this one for everybody.
But that's just, but that's, that's.
Booklet that he's talking.
Yeah, all the papers you end up signing probably equal four or five times that.
Did we receive that back in January?
Because you were here at the first one, and then it came your day, down south.
Yeah, right.
So that was part of the package.
That's what I said, and we saw it.
Came then, so we'll make sure you get copies of all of this and everything.
Yeah, I, I could get that, the first one, because I, it's this question me picking that up and I could bring it over the next day or so, okay? The, the one with eight, the very first one.
Okay.
Because that's the one that I think is really, well, is really sharp. I mean, you don't see stuff like that unless you've got seventeen or seventy acres where you can do stuff like that.
They have a copy of it here. Pardon? They have a copy of the thirty-one unit plan right there.
Yeah, well, they, they, if they don't, I'll, I'll get some. I gotta get you some with that on it anyway.
With the, with the parallel?
With, with, with the big list of lots, I mean, it's where it feeds in each lot.
Okay.
That's what he's after. And I, I've got, or I, I can bring that here yet this week.
And that one would include your landscaping and?
Well, those are, well, first, the, the final thing, well, I got a lot, believe me, I got a lot of things I gotta do. Before I do any of that, I mean, landscaping, that all has to be submitted. What we're after is the layout. Obviously, you want to landscape, I'll have blueprints, I gotta have house blueprints. Although, one of them's pretty much like the one over in Rome, in Bruce Township, you know, outside Romeo there. But, any of you ever visited that?
Yes.
Condo? So one's going to be a side porch and one, I could have built every house that model because that's, that's sold. But anyway, when I have two ranch models and then one raised ranch model, meaning it'll be one bedroom down and two bedrooms up. Okay, so it'll be three different models. And it says there.
Cape Cod style.
The only, the only thing that'll change is from the mid-three-hundred range to the upper-three-hundred range and probably more.
Okay.
But otherwise, that, because that was done about a year ago and it seems like things keep going up. But anyway, because this is a unique project, you don't have anything like it in town.
Right.
People, I haven't had a call in the last couple of years, but I have a couple of times, people kind of alluded that thought it was my fault holding the thing up or something, you know? And I was just on a, a, a business meeting, so on and so forth, and one of the guys, I told him that we're, I'm still working on that. And he said, well, let me know if you ever get it, but he decided to stay where I'm at. But he had some kids here that live in Township or somewhere around here and just wanted to get a little closer. So that's a type of draw, because they're all two-bedroom units, well, you would have something to you. But that's who you're trying to get.
Right.
And then these guys pull their tent in the winter and away they go. But it's surprising, not that many usually. I think a fifty-seven lot one, I don't know now because that's ninety-four, that's twenty-seven years old. But it was a surprise, there was some kids in there. I think one day I looked, I think it was like twelve of them, I got on a bus. But out of fifty-seven units, that's not very many.
Couple other things I wanted to ask you about on this, this plan that was submitted this time. You don't have any sidewalks on this, this one set of, the, the street that goes up to the middle?
Yeah, that would be something that easily add. I mean, we're, this was just kind of like a layout. Just, in other words, it would say, I like this layout better than the other layout.
And, and where did the twenty-eight feet come from?
Uh, this is the width of the street here.
Right, but where, who decided on the twenty-eight feet?
That's what I was told, I had to follow this road.
Okay, because I'm not sure that that's going to be enough for emergency vehicles. I have a call into the fire chief, I haven't been able to, to get in contact with him as of yet, but we will make sure on that one first.
Yeah, that's, in fact, that's something I got to, on the other plan, and I think I can, is, is the road is put in accordance with the county road commission. I mean, that's, that's how you do the roads.
Okay.
And, and of course, the roads got cul-de-sacs. The first one has.
Okay, yeah, this one didn't look like it did. It, it's just, it looks like it just kind of did.
They call those hammerheads.
Yeah, they call them, you got one in the, in Phase Three at the end of the street before you get into the.
Right, that's where I live.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And so that's, that's a hammerhead.
And that was, that's what you would do here?
That's what those are.
Same, same.
Same thing. Be a little bigger maybe, but the same idea. So basically, the, the fire truck ain't going to turn around in a hammerhead. Okay, so you have to see the fire, the fire guy might say, hey, that don't work. The other one does have the radius, that's McComb County Road Commission size. But I have run in with communities that want them, I think another ten feet or something bigger. And I think I could make that a little bit bigger if I had to. Because I, when I laid all that out, I said, just in case, because it seems like fire people. But anyway, that could be made a little bit bigger, but that is McComb County specs, that road. I think, I think of anything, I think the first unit is the one that would be, this is this, anyway. I think that the first unit would be the one to try and shoot for. Because that's sharp, you can take a look at the one, the one over in Bruce Township, and this is even better, I want to be, that was, everything was this, and then it went around the block. Uh, this has houses wooden line up, you got some cul-de-sac lots and that, that's just a nice, a little more expensive to build because of the, the radiuses and the manholes. That one there would take the one, about a third of the manholes that the other one would take because of all the radiuses and stuff like that. So it comes, comes a little bit more expensive per lot.
Okay, well then, as long as you can move forward with whichever plan, doing the parallel.
Yeah, I'll do that because I got that done, I can have that in. So let's go back to the first one.
Because you do have, you do have this letter that shows everything he wants to see in there.
Right. Yeah, I got it, I got it right. And he, he called for that, the first one.
Okay.
I just never get it.
Okay.
So shame on me, I mean, I sort of, I, I, yeah, it's, it's the same thing. But what's going to happen, well, we talked about it. So I guess it's a question, if you want, you can probably make it happen if you don't, then, you know.
Once, once we get what the planner's looking to see and we can go over all of that, we can make a better decision on where we're going to go from there.
Yeah, I'll give, I'll give mine some here to PDF, PDF that to Brian.
Awesome, that'd be great.
Yeah, so that way there, he always has it, he can have it right there, so I can get on the dock for the next meeting, or he could tell me, Jeff, it ain't going to fly according to the zoning ordinance. He said, and then he could tell me, is it something that he would recommend that you pursue the contract zoning?
Absolutely.
So if he says, hey, they, the, the way around this one had to be the contract zoning. If that's the case, he says, that's something I could recommend you do, that's fine. If something recommends that you don't do, then you just have to say if this project is, and then just turn it down.
But right, but until we can see something done up on what he wants to look at.
I'll get that done, I'll, yeah, the first one, we'll, we'll work on the first one now because I'm not happy with that one anyway. Okay, the first one is really.
The thirty-one unit.
The thirty-one is, that is sharp. I, I think even Brian, I mean, Brian even said it, but if it doesn't, if you don't have enough massage that you can make something like that work under a PUD. And this is the only community I ever ran across that wouldn't be able to massage it under a PUD.
Isn't that why you submitted this though, because that wasn't going to fly?
The thirty-one just isn't working.
Wouldn't work. So that's why you submitted this?
No, the thirty-one, he wanted the layout, in other words, that's why I asked you about the thirty-one, if you average it.
Oh, yeah, you're talking about.
You understand, in other words, I didn't have that information for him. So he couldn't make that decision, he didn't say it wouldn't work. He wanted that information.
Okay.
But it was also open space stuff for the other one, it doesn't have, you know, two acres of open space, you know? And so basically, but he, he, he asked for the same thing on that. But if you remember right, twenty-eight lots was some, was something that was mentioned.
Yes.
Okay, so I said, well, maybe I go twenty-eight and then I know there's a big open space. In other words, I'm just trying to make something, work something out.
Right.
So if you said, well, I can make that one work, then I'll, I mean, it's not a problem for me, but I mean, if I was a village, I'd try to take the one that's sharp. I mean, not that it's anything wrong, but it's cut and dried, I got hammerheads. Fire department could have a problem with it.
Yeah, I haven't spoke with the chief yet.
Yeah, I'm just saying. But usually twenty-eight foot, twenty-eight foot is with the idea, there's, on one side of the street gets a sign that says no parking, fire lane.
Right.
That's how you handle that.
Now, I thought this one is set with no parking at all on the street, not on either side.
Well, that's.
Your twenty-eight foot road in the second plan that you.
Yeah, yeah, that.
That's no parking on, on the streets either side.
No, that would be no parking on one side. Usually that's what the fire department would want. I'd have to check with them, but usually that's what happens on twenty-eight foot street.
Okay. Okay, well, like I said, once, once we can get what Brian's looking for and we get a more efficient look at, at what, what's going to go on, we'll be able to make a better decision.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get that to him, I'll, yeah, I have, that's already been done.
So since you're redoing the master plan and all, like, couldn't you rework something into the new master plan to make this kind of a project work?
Redoing the ordinances took us, I believe, just over a year.
Right.
The master plan is a lot more involved, so I'm thinking that's going to take at least that, if not more.
But could you do, within a year, I mean, this might take a year as it is if it re-gets going.
Well, contract.
Until we actually got into it and started making changes or seeing what needs it, what doesn't, I, I really couldn't make an informed answer on that.
Yeah, I was just wondering, but it could make a change when you redo the master plan to accept something like this. That's the purpose of reworking the master plan usually, right? Is to make the community more acceptable to what's happening everywhere.
If you can't make a project like this work now under the zoning you have, obviously you don't have the right zoning. I mean, that's obvious, because these units are condo units everywhere. I mean, they're in Rome, they've got, hell, I did, three or four of them in Rome, in, well, three in Romeo and one in Bruce Township, that's like what this one is. That's just in Romeo. And there's at least three or four others I'm aware of, Apple, Apple, whatever it is, you know, Conard and some odd in there. And I have one with eighty-eight, I have another one with forty or fifty. I can't remember, but I do love it. But anyhow, and it's like over in St. Clair, that just happened, we put the sewer and stuff in now. But they were able to do it under the PUD. Well, if you can't, then the only option would be something like the contract zoning. So we'll, we'll get that over to Brian, I'm sure he'll have a chance to look at it before the next meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
I understand that meetings are now on the first Monday, this one didn't make it.
No, not always, not always. Don't.
Where's my calendar?
Kevin, you got it, Andy?
Uh, yeah.
Next meeting, yes. That's the master plan.
Any questions for me? There's something I did.
Until we actually see what, what's going to go on with the parallel plan and we hear from Brian, that's when I think we'll, we'll be able to come out with some.
And I'm going to talk to Brian to the point where, where, where are we at? That's what's hoping tonight, but, but anyway, we can get that to him, I, I don't have it anyway. So I got a copy of PDF plan over to him.
Okay. August meeting actually is moved all the way down to the nineteenth.
The next month?
Yes, August nineteenth.
Got it Monday too.
It is, it's the third Monday.
Okay, the third Monday, like it used to be. Tell you what, okay, you're not really like I do, I think, well, this, we have a company meeting on Monday and now, well, maybe we're, we're busy this Monday, we'll go next Monday.
Right, right.
We got a fair week in here next Monday.
Well, in the village.
Yeah.
I tell you what, I, I'm glad that I'm not alone. Okay. All said for me.
I think so, yes, thanks for coming in and.
We'll catch it, I'm sure we'll have something next week where you can make a decision, I think, of Brian.
You never even show it.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
We'll see you all later. You too. Okay.
Okay, for reports tonight, I don't have anything, is there anything you guys would like to discuss before we move forward?
Hi, I'm good.
Thanks.
Something new going on, how's, how's content going?
Good.
Yep.
Yeah, there'd be a four left.
We know this.
We got to read that.
Yeah.
Or hurricane effect.
Right.
Who's, who's going to be this tomorrow? I think it's Wayward Wind.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday. Oh, Wednesday, I still think it's Tuesday.
I know.
I, there's a schedule right out there in the thing, Joe, where you.
Yeah, the nineteenth. I finally found it.
I knew I had my copy.
I had it here somewhere, I'm going through the different files, and I finally found it, it is the nineteenth.
So now, what's he, you have four of them left?
I think so, yeah.
Mr. King being the ending?
Yeah, he's the last one, yeah, yeah, sorry about it, the last one. And you're. August seventh.
So now, are you still playing with that?
Yeah, that's right, just came for practice.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So Wayward Wind is coming? Yeah, Wayward Wind, seven seventeen.
Or I could have just, yeah.
Yeah, they, they got canceled.
Yeah, right now.
So Wayward Wind. Two days gone and Mitch Washington, sorry about it. You need a copy of?
I've got it, right on my fridge.
All right.
Kevin, you need a copy of that?
I'm good, thank you.